And moving on to more on your responsibility. So you have been like close to two years.
About a year, a year, little more than a year.
Little more than a year. Tell us five important achievements you have been watching throughout your campaign and you have done. So just throw to your viewers, what are your achievements you have done, the progress in John's Creek City Council?
Understood. Praveen, can I take thirty seconds to finish my last question?
Sure, sure.
Like what, you know, when growing up, I wanted some great opportunities so that I could hear. I since ever since I've been in the politics, now I know some judges. Now, when I talk to the judges and I tell them there are a lot of very keen students who would like to know what is a judge. This judge, she told me, I will get your students, make them sit next to me. I'll explain them the law and consult with them when I'm sentencing. Each of your kid can come with me for a week. Now tell me, growing up, did you have this opportunity?
No, never.
So that is what is Irosa.
Absolutely.
We want to do that for these people, expose them great this thing. Now let's talk about my role in John Street. Some of the moments which I cherish are. The. Our city is now close to getting about twenty-five years old. This may not be of much relevance to most people, but at about twenty-five years onwards, slowly this city's infrastructure starts deteriorating. And cities infrastructure was earlier with the district or the county. County has got a lot more financial resources. Now, when we taken over as a city, we as a city has to pay. And if these city services are deteriorating, infrastructure, we have to put a lot of cash into it. We either can tax our citizens or we can invite big businesses who come and thrive in our localities and pay. Be free the cost of this infrastructure development. So that is one of the main reasons why we said recently when we had. So as city council, primarily Praveen, if you allow me. What is the relevance of city council in an American's life? We have come from India to this place. We know distinctly there is a difference in life, quality of lifestyle. I want to assure people sixty percent of what you see. What you feel why United States a great country is because of your local government. The services, the amenities provided by the local government. That is where most of your comfort lies or more, most of your irritant points will be. So that's where, when I joined that place, I realized I have this opportunity. So especially as I talk to you about infrastructure. So what happens is suppose a big company comes here, he wants to locate it here. So they come and apply for their permission. When they apply for the permission, the city engineers go through their plans and then give it to something called a planning commission. The planning commission sees the relevance of this business, how it should well fit into the locality, to the character of this place. And then their recommendation. So once it just happened that on a very flimsy ground. And an Indian dentist was denied. A very super specialist was, he was denied permission to establish his business in John Street. When it came to us, then finally the last. Piece of the puzzle is the city council. We are the people who actually give them the permission. We bless them. That is our responsibility. The planning commission denied it unanimously, saying that this doctor shouldn't establish itself. When it came to city council. Now our, from our perch, we see that this, these are the kind of people who should come, we should attract business like this. We passed it unanimously seven. So what did they say? They said to the business community, John's Creek is open for business. John's Creek is looking to bringing quality businesses to this place. You won't believe, two months later, Boston Scientific came to John's Creek. Just last month, almost a year after that. You are familiar with this very, very upscale mall in Alpharetta called Avalon. The same developer who has put up this. Best-in-class mall in the entire United States is now putting a mall with mixed development in John's Creek. I think we'll talk more about the subsequent.
Absolutely. I wanted to do an exclusive program on that Bob, as we discussed, we will definitely do.
So this is what I meant. This is what I meant to say. This is where we have a role in defining the character. So this has been some of the things which, the change of character or the, or prolonging of that reputation matters. And I'm happy that we are part of it.
So one thing I wanted to ask from the perspective of an ordinary person to a business person. Where are the opportunities where they can reach you if they are stuck? That is very important for everyone to understand your role and how they can reach you.
Okay, Praveen, wonderful. Thank you for the opportunity. My business, I know, I'm. Earlier on, I told what the doctor, the doctor does good for his entire lifetime. I have a limited shelf life. For me, another three years, maybe another four. But during this three, four, three plus four, I have the only, that is the only window I have to help. Not just people who look like me, but everybody. Most of the time I'm helping people from Cobb County and Henry County and somewhere in South Georgia because they just heard. Hey, one Indian has got elected to position of in the government. And it helps that people know that I'm little helpful. I would like through your medium, if you can tell them how to contact me, they can always call me. And here is what I want to, also want to tell you, there are certain misconceptions because of which their ventures, their, their. How do I say their, their interactions with cities and government gets delayed. That can be removed by just by a word. To the right people and to the right people, I explain, hey, this is the reason why this man is or this person is applying in your city. So it does help. And if it, I can always tell you this, if it's legal and honorable. Every other politician will listen to us.
Absolutely.
Because they understand, people, we are, at the end of the day, we are all Georgians, we are all Americans. If he knows why, the reason why I'm intervening is I'm just removing certain misunderstand, misunderstanding or miscomprehension. So definitely we do have a role. Just the other day, I, one of the topics very dear to me is. These parents of parents and kids who are differently able, special needs kids. I just spoke to the. Education Department in your county. And I'm just part of one city in your county. And I was. So happy when that lady called me up and said, Mr. Bob, thank you. My kid was in the right class, placed in the right class. These are small things, but for them, that changed their life.
Absolutely, Bob. That, those are the touching points people do not know whom to contact. I've been in number of situations like that, people reaching out to me for help. And I ensure that I write an email to the right people. And if it is right thing, definitely I have helped him. So I will continue to do. This is the medium for all my viewers as well. They can reach out. That is the reason I'm bringing people like you onto the show to explain. That we are all, we are all there to help them in any aspects, which is very legal and good to do. So in the similar thing, I wanted to also understand recently, John's Creek has celebrated Diwali, which is a very good milestone. After you and Dilip coming on board. So tell us more about how people can join in any aspect. It might be a voluntary, it might be a committee, it might be anything. So tell us more, any avenues, how, what is your plan to pull more people into the voluntary or into the committees to make more effective among the. Indo-American community especially.
Excellent idea, excellent idea. And before people forget. Mr. Praveen himself is part of a citizen advisory board in Forsyth County under the sheriff department. This is what, this is what is, I mean, not just seeing. Not just talking the talk, but also walking the walk. Praveen, thank you for your service. I, when, when we met at the sheriff's office, I was so happy that somebody has stepped up to this extent. And, and the way you are saying you write emails to others. Terrific. More power to you. And if I can be any help to you, if I can, if you want to leverage my connections, feel free at any time. And. Talking about opportunities for Indian, not just Indian, any kid, let's put it this way, any, any kid, any, anybody. Point is, just the other day, one legislator came to me and said, hey, we have something called paging in the capital, Gold Dome, or the way the government is. So before he finished it, I already sent it to about twenty-five kids and said, hey, you need to get part, be part of this. You need to understand how the levers of government work. You need to rub shoulders. My point is this, just to, I don't mean to knock on McDonald's or Burger King. If you are exposed to Burger King, you'll know how to make great fries or burgers. But if you get exposed to some of these high-quality individuals, you learn to know how they think. And believe me, they are the people who create opportunities and you need those opportunities. So you should be knowing them. So these are kind of things which I open up to people. So moment I get to know anything and talking about the Diwali and. Diwali and Lunar New Year. Lunar New Year, we celebrate as a Chinese New Year. Chinese, far eastern country people believe in the lunar calendar. That's why they celebrate the New Year. You know, you'd be surprised, one year before we became, came on the city council. There were some Tamilians who wanted our grounds for Jagannath Rathi Yatra. For some reason they were denied. Because they didn't know what happens in this Rathi Yatra. So it is, when you don't know something, you think, you don't definitely think something good about it. You think there is a chance that they'll wreck the ground, they'll disturb. Things, whatever be the reason, it was denied. Thereafter, me and Dilip got on the city council. I imagine one of the most, Georgia was the first city to celebrate Diwali. So that's a tremendous sea change about attitudes because. Me and my esteemed colleague were able to. Convey that this people are extremely conscientious. Very integral to a model society. We need to be, we need to invite them to be part of the mainstream. And I'm glad to say, the mayor, who's a good friend of mine, said, Bob, since you guys came on the city council. I had never seen so many Indians stepping up to volunteer in many communities. And sure enough, we already recommended number of them. But here is what I want to tell you, Praveen. We can't just recommend only Indians or Pakistanis or Chinese. We should recommend the best person, whoever it is. And I believe when people come here, they are some of the brightest minds which have come from our, our previous country. So therefore they should get a chance. And, and I always believe, you know. All people who look like me are ambassadors of India or whichever country they are. So they always have to put their best foot forward, whether they're going to Costco or they're coming to John's Creek City Council. And I believe that they should come to go both places. They should get involved. Praveen, whenever I see you in some of these civic locations, it really warms my heart because. Not only you go there, but you also come on this medium and through you, so many other people are coming on board. And nothing can be better than that for the community. It's not that just because more people like, who look like me are part of this government. I want to invite the best.
Absolutely.
Coming from Indian, Indian community, more power to it. Because this country was built by meritocracy, not just by, you know, friends and family.
Absolutely. You, whatever right point that everyone should put in our best effort, you know, to make that things happen. And more and more people I want to encourage. And I always, people are encouraging me to bringing people like you and, you know, sharing your knowledge. And helping the NRIs or Indo-Americans or maybe Americans as well. Because, you know, more and more we do, more and more people start watching and then they get inspired. That's the main motive of this show. And coming to the John's Creek City Council, help us understand like under mayor, how many councils would be there, what are the opportunities and how many. Different councils will be there and what is their area limit? Just to throw light and how many people are there totally?
Okay, I'll just be very brief in this. See, most people, this for the benefit of not NRIs, but people back home. We have the US government, below it is the state government, below it is the, what you are knowing as district, we call counties, we have county government. In counties, we have cities. So we have city governments. Normally a city is run by its charter. In John's Creek, our charter says, there is a mayor who's the face of the city.
Okay.
There are six city council members. We, along with the mayor, are like board of directors of a company. We set the policy. We are the overseers of, of the execution of our policies. That means if we were to build a park or a, or a bridge and we find that bridges. Collapsed in five years. We question the people who run the execution part. So we are helped by a staff, a permanent staff of city manager and rest of the folks, they run our. Directions. They're the ones who build the parts. We're the ones who go and check it out, whether it's up to our city's character and liking. And that's where we put our, most importantly, we send the dollars that. If we find something very important, that which needs funding, public funding, that's where we come in. I hope I've answered the question. I think you need to remind me the last clause of your question. So this is where essentially we are in the policymaking business, giving. If you take a movie. We are the directors of the movie. Most people don't understand, most people understand that the heroes are somebody else, but we are the directors of the movie. And we are also the people's representatives. So we are, we are quasi-heroes and quasi-directors. The sense, we are the face of this.
You're right. People elect. You have explained very well, Bob, on that. And now the viewers understand what's the government and who is the face of the city and how they are really manipulating things and help people in that. So during the campaign of this particular show, I had couple of questions from the citizens. From the John's Creek citizens, right? One is on the gun violence in this country. I know that it is a big topic, but what is your view in the gun violence? And how it is in your city? Is it under control or it is, you know, you see any anomalies between? And what is your opinion?
Thank you. That's a very sensitive question. I also wanted to, didn't I brag about John speaking the safest city to raise a child? Obviously, we are a very, very secure city. Just to give you an idea, our police department has got about ninety-two officers. There are surrounding cities who want to hire police people. We have a waiting list of six people wanting to get into ours. So that's the, that's our bragging point. Can you please repeat the question, the last part?
The gun violence. How do you see the gun violence and what is the solution?
Okay, here is what I'm saying. Gun violence, especially when it happens in schools, is really an abhorrent thing. It jars peoples to the nerves. And we always want to see an end to this. Here is what our questions. One of the observations which rarely gets thrown up is. All this violence happens in gun-free zones. Ninety-three percent, it's been registered. Ninety-three percent of gun violence happens in gun-free zones. Have you ever heard of a, every time you go to an Atlanta airport? Don't you think there are at least about two to three thousand people who are there, waiting there? Are they not a great target? For any terrorists? Why doesn't it ever happen there? Because there are people in civilian clothes who are heavily armed. Should any guy pull a gun there? He will be immediately neutralized. But unfortunately in a school. We are not allowed to implement certain security measures. Because children are children. We don't want them to be militarized. We don't want them to grow up in a society. But there are several ideas. But if you keep focusing only on that, let's put it this way, look, the car deaths in United States, about forty, forty-five thousand. Nobody calls a ban for that. They are dying. People are dying every day on that. If you divide forty-five thousand by three sixty-five days, so that's a everyday news all across the United States, right? Compared to that, this kind of violence is much less. And again, ninety percent of this violence is with handguns. Which, and most of the violence is also partly suicide is a major factor of that. There are several studies which are never highlighted. The last one in twenty twenty-one was done by. In a university from Washington, George Howard. University or something. I'll send that link to you subsequently. There is a concept called civilian defensive use of guns. That is when a civilian draws a weapon to protect himself. You know, there have been, this is done in the school business. By economists and business books. They found out there are about three million instances. Where the gun was drawn. And you will be startled that eighty percent of the time it was not fired. So that means eighty percent of the time crime was prevented. Look, now this is, Stalin said statistics are just numbers, they don't have feelings.
I know.
Correct? But look at eighty percent of the crime, that means how many rapes were reported, how many murders were reported, how many childrens didn't become orphans? If you look at just, just the weight of numbers. These sporadic school violence which happens. As bad as they are, are very, very tiny in school. Now you tell me, just like as I asked you, can you ban cars which are causing these accidents? Can you ban that? Yes, legislators are working on keeping these guns out of the hands of mentally unstable people. Legislations will come and I hope that it will be a lot safer environment. But this is the essential part which I want to check. Look at World War Two, how many Jews were killed? Six million Jews were killed. Why were they just led to these slaughterhouses? Do you think they would have willingly gone to these slaughterhouses if they had a weapon in their hand?
No.
So it's just something to think of. Would you like to ban something just automatically or would you like to give it a consideration? That's, my interest is, I want people to think in those ways. I do agree, I will never condone violence in schools. Oh, did I say that? I will always condone violence in schools. What am I saying? I will always condemn. I used the wrong word, sorry. I will always condemn the violence. I cannot in good conscience ever. Justify that.
Absolutely. I think you explained it very well. Hopefully more and more solutions around gun violence happens. And we have a peaceful life altogether. That's what we all have to expect and. What is our part? We have to be thorough on that. That's in our control, right? So I think let's hope for the best. And the other one, I know, the topic was a mother of five-year-old was sued by Rhode Island teachers. Union and Build for Asking the Class Curriculum. So that's one of the viewers' question. Don't we have a right to know what our children's been taught in the school?
I, I hats off to this person, whoever sent this question to you. It is a topic which is very, very dear. Even when I came new to this country, when I was new in this country, you come with certain ideas back from India. I, I asked a professor who teaches law and. I asked him, he said, I don't want my children to learn sex education. That was in ninth grade. Her daughter was, his daughter was in ninth grade. He said, why do I want, they've got enough time to learn about themselves, then. What do I push in, to push them to think about this? One of the thing which is very, very. Clear in my mind is. When certain line of thinking happens. Between man and woman. You can't unlearn that. You can't unsee that. You can't unthink that.
Absolutely.
So therefore, when that is the premise. Why do you want children as young as eight years, nine years to learn about this? That is a time when they should play games, build great friendships, great memories, black, blue, everybody, they should get together. And be as children, do things which are children, learn math. Learn how to do spelling. Those are the things which they need to be taught. And if, and the parents have got every right. I repeat, parents have got every right to understand what their children are. This is something very, very alien to us who come from India. We never question what they're being taught there. Or at least when I was growing up, I never had, my parents had never had an opportunity. What I was being taught. But fortunately, they were teaching the right things, not this kind of stuff, which is coming to the fore. I can understand people learning diverse viewpoints. But I can never understand why a child. Under fourteen should learn about this.
You're right.
Here is what, you know, there are several books and textbooks, schools. Libraries, school libraries were. Shockingly revealing. And to an extent, you know, unusual. Experiences of this behavior are cataloged graphically in books, in school libraries and are available in school libraries. What does that mean? It means, Praveen, you and me have been parents, are parents. When we make that kind of resource available. Essentially, we are telling our children, you are, I am blessing you, go ahead and read all this stuff. This garbage is suitable for you. So your government is sanctioning by putting those books there, government is sanctioning. Or rather blessing that or sanitizing that, the trash which is being displayed there in the libraries. That is my opinion. And if parents object to it, more power to them. I will always be in their corner.
I think you're whatever good point, Bob. I think we all need to understand what is required, what is not required. The availability of digital content is too much now. We couldn't control them. I think probably this calls for me, you know, how we can interact with the officials in a monthly fashion. So next I will plan with you, how to engage people with their problems, not to sulk about it, but what is the solution? How can we solve them together? So let's, let's plan out something because I see that a lot of questions coming in. I know that thirty minutes is already done. So we will definitely have a follow-up call in future or we will have a monthly session where you can reveal some happenings in the city. And people as a parent, citizens, as a business owner, as a responsible citizen, they can be part of these discussions and ask their questions. So if you are open, we can plan for something. At least I know most people will not show up, but we will try with the limited people. We will see how this will go.
Sure. In closing, I just like to add, since for you and me, youth are very, very critical components of our life and our future. I always want to tell them, especially our younger audience, please choose your friends carefully.
Yes.
Friends are like buttons on an elevator. Some take you up, some take you down. Please choose your friends carefully.
Right, right, Bob. I think finally, a great message from you and a great learning from you. And finally, before we close, what is the message to the community?
My, my message to the community is very clear. Stay engaged. You are one of the finest components of United States of America. If you are a melting pot, you are very much part of that melting pot. Do not think of it as being disloyal to some country of your origin. Your kids' life and future is being made here. So stay active, stay engaged in the process. That would be my message. And especially. Engage in the process means process of education and process of government. These are two things. I, I'm not competent to say what the economy and all that you are capable, your skill set will take you where you are. But as a community member, stay engaged in the education process as well as government process. This is my two main takeaways.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you so much for your valuable comments and, and you know, the knowledge what you have shared. Viewers, I think it's time, again, thanks to Bob for spending his valuable time with all of us to educate us, to give some solutions as well. And all the viewers, I would say that please encourage to see these videos and also bring up what you need in your day-to-day life. I'm more than happy to bring them onto the show, explain. What you need in your day-to-day life. I'm more than happy to bring them onto the show, explain, share the knowledge to you. And facilitate you to smooth your lives. With that said, have a wonderful weekend. Thank you, Bob. Thanks, everyone.